You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the June fourteenth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access LaPorte County dot org.
Hello, hello everyone. Thank you for coming to the social status of African American males board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting in order. It is noon fourteen Wednesday, two thousand twenty three at noon. We would like to start the meeting off with calling out the pleasure of allegiance, please.
Pleasure allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under heaven, in the principle of liberty and justice.
Thank you all. If I can get a roll call from the secretary. Oh, oh lord.
I'm sorry, I had the, were you able to hear anything?
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry Drew. If we can have the secretary give us a roll call, let's make sure we got a call and can start the meeting.
Kenny Fly.
Here.
Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Stacy Benning.
Present.
Linda Conley here. Pastor Carol.
Present.
Tony Cox.
Present.
Sean Fitzpatrick. Pastor Hurt.
Present.
Pastor Johnson.
Here.
Mike Jones.
Present.
Willie Millsap.
Present.
Fay Moore.
Present.
Any one name I did not call. Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, all here.
Okay, we have eleven all is present today. That's a great thing. Haven't had that in quite some time on time.
Yeah.
Uh, let we, let us go to the mission statement. I, I don't have it, but can we assign someone to always maybe want to read the mission statement? But we'll have to do this every meeting of guessing who might want to do it.
I can read it.
Thank you.
The mission statement of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African American males is to study the social conditions of the state's black male population, develop strategies to remedy or assist in remedying serious adversities and make recommendations to improve the educational, social, economic employment and other circumstances for Hoosiers. The commission serves policymakers and public interest groups as well as the media, community organizations, and members of the general public.
Thank you treasure Benny. I'd like to add, uh, with the May two thousand twenty three meeting minutes, had anyone or everyone been able to recite those to see if you need any corrections before we try to pass it into, um, acceptance.
Move to accept minutes, second.
Okay, we got to move in a second. Can we get a roll call?
Okay, um. Mister Cox. You seconded right.
Yes, I did.
Okay, Fay Moore.
Yes.
McCormick, Mister McCormick.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Linda Conley, aye. Mike Jones.
Aye.
Stacy Benning.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Did I called everyone?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
I thought I did you, did I do you, Pastor Hurt? I'm sorry. I thought I did too.
Yes. Okay.
So the, any nays? All ayes. Eyes have it. Eleven ayes. Passed.
Okay, we got a, a pass of the meeting minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the treasury report that was sent via email? I'm pretty sure.
Yes.
Huh? Oh, you had a question. I have it there. Oh, go ahead, Mr.
The question was that I see where you have attendance here. So you don't count, you don't count attendance.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you sir.
Step ahead of myself.
Oh, okay, okay. No problem guys. All right, uh, did everyone have a chance to read the treasury report that was sent via email?
Yes, most to accept treasure report is written.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Maybe we have a roll call please?
Ms. Benning.
Aye.
Mister Jones.
Aye.
Linda Conley, aye. Mister Millsap.
Aye.
Mister Fly.
Aye.
Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Aye.
Mister Cox.
Aye.
Reverend Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
There are no nays, all ayes. Passed.
Treasury report passes with, uh, no nays and all ayes?
Yes.
We're coming across new business. Um, Secretary Conley, did you have anyone call in or write in for any sections of new business?
No, Mister McCormick sent a late email on something. That what you wanted?
No, 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 no. I, I just, we have housekeeping. I'd like to just bring it up. And I have, uh, I'm, I move that the controller office pay, uh, Cornell Brastow fourth is the, the Bill Ashley Memorial Scholarship. We are past due on that.
Didn't they pay him?
And we have not voted on that. So now I move that the controller office send payment immediately to Mister Cornell Brastow fourth.
I second that. I thought it was paid.
I did too.
Well, uh, second and a motion and a, oh, you got more discussion?
Yes, I had invited Pastor, um.
Yeah, he's supposed to be here.
He still told me yesterday that he was coming, so he may come toward the end. I don't know.
Maybe he's running late.
Might be running late, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Benning.
Aye.
Mister Jones.
Aye.
Conley, aye. Mister Millsap.
Aye.
Mister Fly.
Aye.
Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Mister McCormick.
Aye.
Miss Moore.
Aye.
Mister Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
All ayes, no nays.
Perfect unanimous. We have a passing of that being able to be paid. So do we have to also do something to say the controller's office release the money on a separate motion like the previous one we did with our?
No.
That was my motion.
That was the motion and since the motion was made second and voted on, I will go to the controller's office and do a request for payment so that we can get that, um, completely.
Okay, we got, uh, thank you. We have old business. Um, did you have any one contact old business that you made and put on an agenda?
No.
Of not, I would like to bring up some old business and of, uh, since we moving smoothly so far, I know there's going to be a lot of information under the subcommittees. But with old business concerning the Facebook, you know, we, uh, want to switch over on the Facebook and then we had some other, um, topics under old business we hadn't came back to address. I do want to address Facebook, uh, if you guys don't mind. Okay, with the Facebook access, um, I had spoken with Mister Corley, the original Facebook creator of that. And, um, he says he really doesn't have a password or anything. And I don't think he's been deceptive. Um, really to be able to give it to us so we can continue on. So, um, the process of making a Facebook page for us, it requires one of us to actually be the Facebook maker. You know, we have to have our account and then we branch off and you make a count, uh, a separate count like a, like that. Um. It's different from just like a personal Facebook. You just make your Facebook and it's there. This is like a, um, a business Facebook like type deal. And so it has to be branched off of someone's personal Facebook, which that's what Marty, that's why he can't get the password because it doesn't really help. So I want to ask the group, what do you want us to do? Who want to take the assignment? Uh, how should we go about it? I'm just bringing it up to get it passed us and over. Anyone?
Is this, um, discussion?
Discussion anyone?
Yes. Mister Chair.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Um, it's been, um, several things I tried to post on Facebook. Um, as you know, it was a youth, um, uh, a youth gathering at PNC, um, talking about uh, mental health in our community and how it targets our young people and how their mind concept is not developed until a certain age. Um, there was numerous pictures taken with, um, with the circuit court judge, Mister Campbell and some other individuals. Um, I continually try to post that on our page, but for some reason it keeps coming down. I, I don't know the purpose of it, but.
Someone took it down?
Um, numerous times. With that, with that being said, I, I just, um.
Only one has access is Marty, me and Eric Carey.
Yeah, um, with that just being, with that just being said, I, um, I really don't have no opinion on this. If we just can't have our own Facebook page and, um, I was one of the people that was voted on to also post stuff on there. I try to post all those jobs that was available. Every time I post, somebody deliberately take them, take it down. Um, no, no big deal because I got my own page as well and I keep posting the stuff. I just, uh, wish that we had our own page and be done with this.
I have a question. How do they take it down? I'm not Facebook.
Well, I can tell you that. How you can take it down is, um, the person that has access to the page, the, you know, uh, the code or whatever got put in place to overhold it. You can go in there and do the corrections, but when you guys, if you pick it up, you're not able to take it down. You know, or you're not able to make any adjustments toward anything. Only the admins of the page can. And I can assure you with one hundred percent certainty, I have not touched the page and taken anything down. But I'm not the only one with access or have the code. And I don't want to point fingers or say, you know, either there or there, but I do want to clear myself from that taking down of any post um, concerning youth, jobs or anything of that nature.
I just want to just put it out there. I'm not accusing nobody, but somebody did take it down and it's fine with me. Um, we just need to move on. Just so everybody know, I don't have, I've had limited access where I can post something. But if I miss spill something, I had to call, uh, our president, Mister Fly and had him take it down and I had to repost it with the correct spelling. So I have no access to, to erase and so.
And I tried to give you that access and I told you, they won't let me get that access either. Well, I don't know if they, I don't know who they is, but I, I can't get, I can't even make you a full, you know, authority figure like I have, you know, I, and because it requires me to put in the password to make an admin, you know, that I don't know the password. That's why I kept saying we need a password. So, um, is that question more discussion? Yes.
Can we just kill that Facebook page?
Sorry. Can we just kill that Facebook page and begin from a fresh?
Yes, that's what I was.
There's concerns people who should have authorization will have it.
Right, that's what I was mentioning. I'm sorry.
Is that possible?
Yes, it's possible. That's what I was bringing up when I was speaking previously. It would take one of you or one of us to have our page branch off of that to be able to make that page. That's why I was saying who would like to take that responsibility of doing that. Because you can't, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry. Because you can't just create it like a personal regular Facebook page. You have to have it branched off as a business page like that. And you have to branch it off of your own personal page. And that's how Marty made this page. That's how Marty made this page and we can't get access to it because it's part of, you know, so, um, even if we kill the page, I don't even think I have deletion, deactivation status. Like, uh, Mister McCormick, Commissioner McCormick was saying, even myself, I have certain things that I can't do either. And that's add, uh, admin or certain things like that, but that's either here or nay. But I'm sure Mister Corley wouldn't mind some kind of way deleting it if we tell him.
I move, excuse me, I move that the, the current Facebook page that's being used that's under whoever's control, Mister Corley or whoever, the, um, the social status name and likeness be removed as soon as possible and delete it.
Check.
That's, that's first motion.
I second it.
He seconded.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry about that. We got a motion and a second by Robert Johnson and motion by McCormick. Can we have a roll call please?
Pastor Hurt. Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Mister Cox.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Mister McCormick.
Aye.
Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Mister Fly.
Aye.
Mister Millsap.
Aye.
Conley, aye. Mister Johnson. Ms. Benning, aye. All ayes have it. No nays.
Okay, we have a passing of that. Mister Secretary Conley, would you want to take care of that or I can?
No.
Contact Mister Corley first.
No, because I know nothing about computers, Facebook.
Oh, no, no, no. You weren't going to actually do the deleting, but you have to tell Mister Corley by email, but I'll tell him.
I can do that, but.
Okay, that's no problem.
Building or doing it.
No, right.
Also, before we can, I have another motion.
Okay, okay, let's get to motion one. Yes, sir, Mister McCormick, you got another motion?
I move that we, uh, name a committee of three to four individuals to sit down and discuss on how we're going to move forward with creating our own page. Um, it, it can be just a one day workshop, um, should only take less, should take less than hour to do that. So I move that we, that we move name a committee, a subcommittee to, uh, address that and, um, um, and take their recommendation, whatever they bring back to this board as far as do we have our own Facebook page or do we? And how, how we move forward. Thank you.
Well, before, well, you get a set, uh, see if, sorry, because I did want to say something too. I was going to say at that committee or afford that makes that group of someone in that group wants to take that responsibility, maybe you guys can make it right then and there in that workshop and bring it back to the table and say, here it is. I mean, it's up to you guys. Uh, can we get a second on that motion or anybody want a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mister McCormick and a second by Robert Johnson, Commissioner Robert Johnson. Can we have a roll call please?
Commissioner Benning.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Conley, aye. Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox.
I was reservation.
I would.
Reservation is that it should be a three member committee. So we, instead of a four, I don't need a two, two dead lot.
The reason.
He said three.
We said, he said three.
He said three.
He moved for three.
Said three or four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then I. I still trying to work.
Right, eleven ayes, no nays. I say.
We have a passing in the, uh, unanimous vote to do that. Um, do you guys got a date? You want to set a date now or you want to reach each other via email? How you want to do this?
I recommend that Ms. Moore heads up this committee and she can name the other people that she would like to be on there with her.
Okay, I want to object for being on that, anything like that, okay? I'm okay. Just for, just in case you pick me.
I accept and we can meet right after this meeting since everybody, everybody is here.
Okay, okay, the meeting is after this meeting if everybody have.
Time. They will meet with you, correct? Okay.
You were going to name your. You want to name the people or ask the people right now? Because that's what McCormick, uh, suggested. Right.
Okay, um, Pastor Hurt.
As long as I don't have to set it up because I'm. I can help, but as long as I don't have to set up the process.
Okay, Rodney McCormick.
Yes, I sat on there with you. Thank you.
It's me.
It's your pick.
Yeah, okay, good job, Ms. Fay.
Three.
Okay, um, everything's going according. Uh, with old business, I do want to bring this up because, uh, it was said back as a reminder. Hmm, Commissioner Hurt, they hadn't repointed you yet. I mean, you have, you took your oath?
I thought, yeah.
After, okay, bingo. All right, just wanted to make sure we cleared up on that. So old business, we still got any old business to speak on?
Mister Chair.
That you want to bring up? Yes, sir, uh, Commissioner.
Reference to old business, uh, in our prior minutes, we, uh, discussed the possibility of drafting a request for donation letter because we're exhausting some of our funds. So we want to, we don't want to wait to the last minute where we're at zero. So we need to draft that letter and get it out into the community if we still want to do it.
It's open for discussion, Miss Sebsey. The donation fundraiser, we want to pit out towards the community. If anyone have any input or suggestions or any of those.
Is that, is that the ask letter that we?
Yeah.
That we spoken of?
Yeah.
Ask permission to do that. I will put the, uh, ask letter together with, um, some help. I'll, I'll make sure it get done.
Okay.
And I give it to the board before approval, before it even goes out.
Okay, great. Good, good ticket, uh, about that old business.
Yeah, because when we were making the vote to give out the funds, we want to make sure we have some funds before we give them out.
Okay, uh, Treasurer Benning, you have a?
Yes, I just want to, um, add to that. I think when we initially started talking about that, myself, Commissioner Conley and Commissioner McCormick were supposed to get together. I think we apologize. We kind of let that fall between the cracks. So we'll get on that.
Okay, just like you guys on the ball. Old business, I'm trying to think why everyone's talking because we, we've been doing things, uh, over the previous meetings and setting things and saying things, uh, and I recall if we got back to it all, um, we kind of, uh, I don't know, I don't say we forgot about them, but we do need to recount, regurgitate them and make sure we going about it or getting them things done. Can anyone remember anything in old business that seemed a necessity that we might have passed up before we move on from old business?
Yes, their last issue I think that we need to address is the Bill Ashley Memorial Scholarship or Reverend Bill Ashley Scholarship. Um, I'm going to motion that we that we table to our temporarily stop the scholarship until we speak to Mister Ashley and, and move forward from that moment forward after hearing him speak. Because we have a real issue dealing with the finance. Um, like it or not, like it or not, we are running out of money. And for the last since two thousand fifteen, this board has been given a thousand dollars every single year with no reimbursement or help from, uh, the individuals who, uh, who also said they was going to do it. I don't want to put no fingers or blame nobody. This, this, we have to run this like a business and we need to address this issue, but right now I'm moving, I move that we, um, temporarily stop the scholarship. And the good news is after speaking to Wendell McCullough, he made it clear that, um, we didn't have no, we didn't put no scholarships out this year. And so we don't owe nobody for this year. Thankfully, because if that would have been the case, would have been down to ninety six dollars. And, uh, like it or not, we have issues on that and we need to deal with that. Um, it was great that, um, back in the day, Mister, I wasn't here then, I believe it was, uh, you correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Moore. Uh, I believe it was Mister, uh, the mayor, Dwayne, not Dwayne Perry, but, uh, Ron Meyer, who gave a lot of money. I think like, uh, like thirty thousand or some.
Forty.
Some forty?
It was forty.
Yeah, he gave a lot of money and, and we've been operating off that money and we haven't had no ambition on trying to raise money and keep the pot going. Now, now's our turn to step up.
Perfect timing.
Okay.
Great job. Um, get, before you want to take back that motion since he's here to speak?
I don't know, it wasn't your second chance.
Oh, okay. I second you. No, it's, it's.
We. I'm pulling the motion down until we hear from Mister Ashley.
Okay, before we go, before we go there, I have a question for Rodney.
Okay, discussion.
When Meyer gave us, was that from the mayoral ball?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that's what they meant.
So if they're, so if that's what, I was, I was looking, I was looking at, so if that ever happens again, we can make up another request. Boom, thank you.
Okay, okay, uh, Mister Ashley, uh, yeah, in the audience, and I'm glad you could make it. We were just right on this subject, going to pass a motion to wait to do any kind of decisions until we heard from you. If you would like, would you like to post a podium and speak about the Ashley funds?
Thank you. Now, I am unaware, God bless you. Again, thank you. My name is David Ashley, uh, pastor of Redeem Fellowship Church. Uh, again, I'm privileged to be invited by Commissioner Connolly and stand before all you all. Now, I'm unaware of the particulars of what's being discussed. I do know she asked me to come in the email to speak to the matter of the Reverend Bill J. Ashley Foundation. So again, I was trying to understand the intricacies that's being discussed and I just missed the motion that was.
Excuse me, can we repeat that again? My mind went way left.
Yeah, okay, no, I said, I'm not really aware of the particulars.
Okay.
This girl's.
Want to talk?
I got you.
I got you, yeah. I'm telling you, okay, the particulars about this scholarship funding, we want to, uh, see what's, uh, the deal with making payments or putting money into that scholarship from other organizations, yourself or anyone else other than us. And, um, the problem is running into that we are the only ones that's been contributing to that fund for, I don't know what you said, the years.
Uh, the fifteenth, uh, I mean, uh, two thousand fifteen, May two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, so we've been the only one funding this fund since two thousand and fifteen. And we were just wondering if you or your organization or whoever else would like to start helping us fund this fund, this the David Ashley squad.
Can you hand that to him?
The David Ashley squad?
Oh, what?
Reverend Bill Ashley.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, um, now I do know that, you know, um, back in the, the, the central, Ron Meyer, he had enacted us a seat of the board on the board. He gave a seat to the Northwestern International Conference because again, it was dealing with, um, disenfranchised, uh, black males here in Michigan City. And, and when, when Chairman Payne was the chair of that committee, you know, this was the ideal and I thought was a good ideal because my father uh, in his legacy had helped so many, um, disenfranchised African Americans as well as, uh, Joe Hawkins and Emmett Wise and some of those big names around the city. Uh, and I do know that, uh, and he had, um, got the idea from the human rights who were, uh, had a foundation regarding the, um, uh, Joe Hawkins, who was a big political machine here in Michigan City and did so much. And in fact, they have the same, same type of scholarship of fund and the intricacies of how to apply is a little bit different, but the nature of it is all the same. Now, Ron Meyer, when, uh, you know, he had gave us a seat on the board, you know, um, I asked him about why the, if we have a big time concern with the social status of African American males here in Michigan City. Uh, just to make a long story short, in the NAACP, they generate, um, um, every so often something called the SOBE Report, State of Our Black Youth. And I think that out of ninety two counties, we were like number three from the bottom, you know, during that time. So, and I was challenging the politics during that time that if we are important, if you're concerned with uh, trying to help the social status of African American males in Michigan City, why isn't a board like this funded with legislation? I mean, I mean, legislation funded by the city council. So therefore it'd be generating monies. So therefore there's other things that we're trying to do that will help in that funding. So what he did was, I think that, uh, he had normally used his funding for the, for the, uh, mayor's ball to go different places. And I think that he gave half the funding to, uh, the social status. And this is the funding that we have been generating or operating from since that time. So again, but after I got off, I think Pastor Current, he set into my seat and they were supposed to have been trying to get this, um, a board funded through law. Now, we did, um, from that time, we did as a church, uh, we gave a couple of scholarships. Uh, because again, there were lack of funds, you know, and I, I did it one time. Um, I think that it went from five hundred to a thousand dollars. And then one time, uh, Pastor, uh, I mean, uh, Chairman, um, Payne had funded out of this board account as well as we took, um, uh, upon ourselves to make sure we pass a scholarship in the name of the social status of African American males on the behalf of the Bill G. Ashley Foundation. So, uh, but again, but I'm willing to, um, I do know that it was on our agenda here a couple of months ago. Uh, with the Northwestern International Conference to bring back that to the conference. You know, um, so again, but I'm, um, open, you know, to, uh, hear ideas. Of course, if you need, um, I'm, I'm willing to fund, uh, the next scholarship, you know, as a church, you know, so, but again, so. But again, so.
Oh, I'm not trying to cut you off. You 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 did proper. We've been waiting for this answer, but you did just just confirm that you're willing to um get into the fund.
Absolutely.
That's great. That's great. Mr. McCormick, did you have any um uh questions or suggestions?
Yes, um, well, after listening to Miss Mister Ashley, Pastor Ashley, after listening to you, um, you said that some somebody from Ministry Alliance gave money before for this uh scholarship before?
No, we are the church. We had funded a, it was two individuals. I can't remember. I know it was pastor. I thought it was during the year that Pastor Lane's son had got um the scholarship, but I remember they had named another person to be uh able to to be a recipient of that fund. And we, as a church, funded that um um scholarship.
If and I I handed you the minutes from, what was handed to you was the minutes from um May, May, I believe, uh the minutes from May of two thousand fifteen. And and as you can go to paragraph two, you clearly stated that you want the Northwest Minister Alliance to make sure they donate and your family was gonna donate. It's good to hear that you said that you're willing to donate. Um, cause I think my motion will be that whatever you guys are going to uh make the price of the scholarship to be, that's what we gonna stick to. And we hope that you you guys take care of that part of that portion of the scholarship. Uh, we are not in a position at this time to continue to match funds or give out any more funds. I just, I just can't see until we get something stable with our income, our money coming in. Cause we just know, we just ran it, we ran it cow dry and we are, we are in trouble right now. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else have discussion for us, David?
I want to thank you very much for your presence and for your willingness.
Thank you for the invite.
To contribute, uh cash check or money order.
I just, um, I just like to want a clarity. We, the commission started the BJ Ashley Scholarship, not the Ministry Alliance and not Reverend Ashley's church. We started. We did. And uh it's in um in the on the scholarship application. Okay, so but so but it would sound, but it sounded like you're expecting them to do the scholarship and that we are going to support.
No, what I expected was for the word that was given, that they will, they will take care, they will also donate funds. That's all. We broke down, we in trouble right now. So that's all I was talking about.
I say this really quickly. Um, with this college funding, I think it is appropriate that we go by ear because as of now, until the, we accumulate the monetary values, we will only be putting ourselves in the hole each year trying to, and then when we do get money, we already have it owed out. We wouldn't even, we'd be broke every time we get more money. So we don't want to hold on you guys. So we don't want to, we don't want to continue to um cumulate, cumulate uh acknowledgements of funding to people and we barely have the money to do it, but we not gonna eliminate the the um you know, the funding for for the college scholarship. It's just gonna go by ear according to our monetary value each year.
Now, uh, now, when is the uh scholarship is handed out for this year?
This year, there will be, you know, scholarship because we were unsure about the application didn't go out and thank God it didn't. We need to get to this process and we didn't um Wendell did not, Mr. McCullough did not, um, we didn't pass out the application issue.
How about this, Mr. Ashley? If you want to be stand up guy, funded us just a thousand dollars. Uh, after all, it's been since two thousand fifteen, since you know, you guys actually really put in and uh kind of ran us all we drive. We paying uh scholarships to people from two years ago, Cornell Branch and someone else. Uh, what I was speaking is uh, I I I don't think, I don't think it's no uh problem like, you know, like uh, if it's an issue with your monetary value, I understand, but if you guys got it, but no thing, it's just a thousand dollars. Do it this time. We've been doing it five years.
Well, just as you are, you are, are you board and each one of you all have a vote and I'm governed by board too also, even though that I have, you know, great influence. But again, you know, but this was a stem from the commission status of African American males. But I do know that sometimes when you cannot afford to fund it, um um scholarship foundation, just as the Human Rights does, they suspend it for that year. You know, I mean, and that's, you know, it's, I don't think there's a lengthy discussion, is therefore need to create no friction. But again, but if you don't, but if you got desire to take it off your agenda or take it off your um uh 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 make a part of your budget, you know, again, you know, as being the son of a pastor Reverend Ashley, I'm okay with it.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Uh, Mr. Ashley, does anyone have any more discussion for Mr. Ashley as we do have committees? And uh time is a running down. Okay, David Hurt, he had his hand up first, Mr. Hurt.
I do have a question. If we started this, we're just gonna, we're just gonna stop it? What what are we gonna do? I didn't hear that said completely. I heard somebody mumbled it, but I didn't hear. So I just want clarification as a as a board.
Okay, great. They're just, if it says what I'm saying, I'm okay with it. If not, I'll listen to motion.
Okay, what was the motion to repeat this? Oh, one more discussion, Miss uh Commissioner Conley.
I'm I'm Linda Conley. And I thank you for coming and explaining what was happening, but that because there was a big question about the finding.
Thank you again.
Pastor Ashley, I have one question for you. Um, thousand dollars is uh is steep. Would it be disrespectful to you and your family if if we, if we all were to come together and bring it down to five hundred dollars and go back to your board and see if they will get that funded every year? Just five hundred dollars instead of a thousand?
Yeah, um, so so what I'll do is, again, you know, as a pastor, I'm able to uh spend up to three hundred dollars a month uh without, you know, going to any appropriations. That's only three hundred dollars per month, you know, but it's it's that month I use it or lose it, you know, so it not generated, you know, so um but what I can do is I can put that on the agenda and see what they say. Got seven other members, you know, and see what they say and uh we'll go from there. But again, but it won't be disrespectful at all to reduce it from a thousand to five hundred. I think that right now times are hard. And I believe anything is a lot towards, you know, uh trying to help point scholars. I got my got a daughter now who's you know, who's in law school, you know, and again, in in every little penny counts.
Exactly, sir. You're right. Times are hard nowadays, very hard. Well, we're gonna be fundraising and finding some means of fundraising through a workshop also. So can we pass on, anybody got anything for that? Well, Mr. Ashley, while he's here, we is present on time. We have subcommittee reports, good order, commissioner table.
I moved the table, I moved the table this issue until we hear back from Mr. Ashley.
Second. Roll call, Mr. Conley.
Miss Spinning, aye. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Conley, aye. Mr. Millsap.
Aye.
Mr. Fly.
Aye.
Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Mr. McCormick.
Aye.
Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Pastor Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Eyes have it. It's been moved.
Eyes have it unanimously. Okay, Mr. Ashley, we'd be looking forward to hearing from you soon, okay? Thank you, brother, for coming and taking your time to come out to talk to us.
Thank you, Pastor Ashley.
Okay, we can move on with the um agenda. We can kind of speed along because I think with off these subcommittees, less than fifty twenty minutes, we're gonna have to make it right. So, okay, subcommittee reports. We have education. Do you want to still mix that with uh jam it with um criminal justice? You got?
Yes.
Okay, education slash criminal justice, subcommittee report, Chairman um McCormick, I think's the chair.
For education, forgive me, for education, we we did meet. Um, we had a chance to talk to Mr. McCullough and and like I stated before, there was no scholarship awarded this year. And there will not be one awarded this year at this time. Um, we are looking to meet um here with um next month and to finalize other issues on the on the field trip. And I will turn that over to the co-chair, Ms. Benny.
Yes, thank you. Um, we met on Thursday, June the eighth. Um, myself, co-chair McCormick and um Commissioner Pastor Johnson. Um, we discussed trying to finalize all the specifics of the this ongoing, trying to um complete the um, get the the field trip underway. And we finally came up with some dates. We're looking at a primary date of July the eighth, alternative date of July the fifteenth. All of this is going to really be dependent on um, the controller's office. I've met with the controller, the staff in the controller's office. There's different deadlines because they have to make a presentation to the Board of Works. If our uh votes don't coincide with the the timeframe of the Board of Works, then we won't get the monies to be able to do it in the in the um the date that we're looking at. So hopefully today we'll be able to vote on some specifics as far as um whether we can get the check. Everybody's in agreement with the check being um processed. And then from there, I'll meet with the controller's office to see if we're if we're in sync with the timeframe of uh July the eighth. If that is the case, and we get the check, in addition to, um, I created a permission slip um for the youth that will be attending. If we can get all this stuff coordinated, then we will definitely be um conducting our field trip on July the eighth.
I have a question. How many students, how many kids are we talking about taking? Um, anywhere around twenty twenty-five? And where are they coming from?
Various different sources from some of the churches where uh Pastor Johnson has some um uh Pastor Hurt has some, we have some from the Youth Basketball League. We we have some other entities that we were looking.
If we can get the number, we talked about how much money we're gonna vote on and present. If we could narrow down the number of kids and how much the um tickets cost to get in.
We have all of that.
You have all that?
We have all that. We presented that actually months ago. Um, what we're doing is we're looking at a projection of number of chaplains, number of kids. We're gonna aim at that number. And then once we go to the field trip, we'll um have an itemized itemized um list of our expensive expenses as well as the receipts. And whatever we have left will be turned back over to the controller's office.
Because so the kids, they're gonna get a group rate, correct?
Right, I'm sure, right.
And then, don't the Desaba have a group rate?
Yeah, they, we, yeah, we have all of that, but the bottom line is that we cannot pinpoint it down specifically because we might have kids that commit. And then when the time comes, they may back out. So we have a number that we're looking at asking. That's the number that we'll present here today, and that's the number that we'll vote on. We'll submit that to the controller's office. They'll can uh cut a check. And then once we um go forth with the field trip, we don't expect, I don't expect us to to spend that cap. Whatever is left, we will uh bring that back and submit that, the receipts to the controller's office.
I don't have the numbers, but so how much are we talking about?
I'm most, can I make, now I make a motion, please?
Yes, you can make a motion, uh, Commissioner McCormick.
I I move that, I move that this board allow uh the uh have the control office turn over two thousand dollars to our treasurer, Commissioner Benny, so that she can hold, so that we can be prepared for the field trip. We asked, there's a lot of time restraints here. The mayor is here today. They has to go to the Board of Works meeting to get approve approved first. So what we're gonna do is simple. We're going to make sure all receipts are turned over to the controller's office, which is required by law. If it's five hundred dollars or fifteen cent, we are going to turn over all our ledgers like we supposed to
Right.
and move forward. Right now, it's a it's a time restraint thing. And I'm not gonna question this because
I have a question about the motion.
Discussion?
Yeah, my my point is that since there is variance in numbers, I think that number should be twenty-five hundred that we ask for. Because we we bringing back in the excess anyway is all the same, but I don't want us to be short.
Right. Are thank you, are we providing lunch for them?
Yes.
So yeah, buying everything that was submitted.
That's the reason why I want to know the number and say, I agree with you that we should take, we want X number of dollars we're ever gonna start working with. And then we can go from there. And we've already revisited all of that before. So I know.
Just said, just second everyone, we can't talk all at once, but we're gonna be proper. Uh, what we gotta do is what my concern was, I get you Millsap. Well, my concern was initially when I tried to do a special meeting. Um, all all I my concern was making sure that it was gonna be accounted for, but that is clearly stated by Mr. McCormick now that regardless per law, you have to turn in all the stuff to account for anyway. So I guess that was a uncalled for action by myself. Um, you have anything?
Yes, uh, uh, the motor transportation is offshore.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
And then once they get to the, get there, are they gonna get to the museum?
You want to talk into the mic, uh, Commissioner Conley?
And do we have a mode of transportation once they get off at fifty-third? I think it's fifty-third or fifty-fifth.
We have several options, but we will provide the receipts. We can Uber, we can walk. I'm pretty sure now it's gonna be nice.
Yeah.
So whatever we mode of transportation we're gonna use at that time, we will make sure the receipts, everything is provided for. We have everything covered down from going, leaving here, going there, coming back and taking the kids back home, making sure they get home.
Sounds like a go to me. If we can get that motion and get that money turned over uh immediately, so we can get these kids down to the Desaba Museum would be great with me. Someone, did you make that motion in a second?
There was a motion, but it's no second.
Second emotion.
At twenty-five, that's the amount, correct?
You want to change the amount of motion?
I will revise, right. Um, I'm in my, on my motion, uh, I move that the clerk, uh, the controller's office turn over twenty-five hundred dollars to our treasurer, Stacy Benny, to hold for safekeeping so we can be prepared for the field trip and go with the with the understanding that all money that's left over will go back to the controller's office along with all receipts for every dime that we spent. Thank you.
I second that motion. Can we get a roll call?
Ms. Benny?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Millsap?
Aye.
Mr. Fly?
Aye.
Pastor Carol?
Pastor Carol.
I'm not sleeping anybody.
I, Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Pastor Hurt?
Aye.
Pastor Johnson?
Aye.
All eyes, most has been unanimously accepted.
Thank you. So I will go in front of the uh controller's office once we leave here and do a request for payment so we can get this taken care of.
Okay, great job, you guys. Get that on the road, get them kids down there. Uh, next, anything else with criminal justice uh education? We'd like to get to help.
No.
Okay, to the health uh subcommittee, do we have any information or suggestions or anything to speak on with help?
No.
Okay, it looks like we don't have too much going on in health unless someone want to jump up and think of anything. Okay, we passing health.
One, one thing, uh, Mr. Johnson, um, can we do something that that will um assist uh senior citizens, something we can do to talk about uh diabetes? And and can we come together? I don't I don't know that much, but I know it's plaguing my mother bad and other people, my family, other people in the black community. I mean, we gotta do something.
Well, Commission uh McCormick, we would get with the um with with the individuals and we'll get back to you concerning that.
All right, put me in on anything to do with helping that out.
We'll definitely get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you with the health uh suggestion. About the employment, uh, Commissioner Millsap, you always got it going on unemployment.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, I received numerous calls. Uh, one was from the uh trustee uh Michiana trustees reference to the employment seminar that we have with the Work One. Uh, they are tapping into their resources and that was information that was not known, so we're moving forward with that. Uh, I'm gonna reach out to Monique from the Lepore County.
I'm telling Monique I'm sorry.
No problem.
Not her speaking when we out tired.
She under, she understood. So I'm gonna reach out and we'll revisit that.
Okay, Mr. Millsap.
No problem.
Something, Mr. Millsap?
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't know, a lot of us haven't been having a chance to go to the county commissioners meeting. Ms. Moore, I know you got started on this. Mr. Millsap, I know how you feel and Mr. Cox and um. Ms. Moore, I know you got started on this. Mr. Millsap, I know how you feel, and Mr. Cox, and, um, we need to start showing up at these meetings and demanding from the commissioners to make a decision on hiring her full-time or not. Um, I, I don't, I, I, I don't know what's been going on. I'm, I'm tired of seeing the same old plague. The problem has been plaguing us for years. Um, I know I'm not the only voice here, and we need more voices to show up that were genuine. If you genuinely concerned about the hiring practice throughout this county, I hope that we can show up and talk about this and see why or, or what they're gonna do about hiring an HR director. Thank you.
Very well said, Mr. McCormick.
In case we have interviewers, when is the next meeting?
It will be next Wednesday. It's the first and, uh, third, third Wednesdays.
That's for the commissioners, but the council also has a heavy say on that, so both, both, um,
I'm ready to go.
Both councils.
If we can get together, I'm ready to go.
Good point.
Hey, you guys, you guys get that lined up and together and all, whoever's available. Think that'd be a great idea to get over there and worry about who's gonna be hiring us, right? Okay, we're gonna get on to the, um, any more employments?
No, that's it.
That's all?
Hmm.
Okay, we gotta go social factors, because criminal justice and education was put together. Can we get some information on social factors, Ms. Faith?
I print it minutes. You have a printed copy of our meeting. Please review it, and, uh, if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, no problem. So that's good, but we ain't got to be taking time. So you guys can read it. Got any questions? I prefer you just read and bring it up next time, uh, you're here, I guess. So we get to good of order. The good of order, what we're gonna do here, I'm gonna suggest that we switch this around, because the public comment shouldn't be last. We should have the last say. So would you guys mind me amending the agenda to have the public comment now and the commissioner's roundtable last?
Move to a, move to, switch the agenda around, so public comments be next and.
Motion by McCormick, second by my brother right here, uh, Pastor Carol. Can we get a roll call on that? Or do we just all say, yai? We can do that too.
Yay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All opposed. Eyes have it.
Thank you. So we're gonna go to the public comment right now. Anyone for public comment? Okay, Tommy, come on up.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. First of all, last Saturday, the Indiana High School Ethic Association had their state track meet down in Indiana University of Bloomington. I want to congratulate Michigan City High School seniors, uh, Jeremiah Clanton on the boys' side and the two hundred meters. And on the girls' side, we had Isaria Truvilian, a qualifier. Really want to see more of that happening for Michigan City. It's, it's always what I like to see. Also, on last Sunday, we had the graduation ceremonies at Michigan City High School. I want to congratulate all three hundred and ten graduates. We had this year, we had twenty-nine distinct, distincts, graduated with distinction. I also want to congratulate, we had seventy-eight, uh, graduates from adult education. I think that's really important here in this community. There, we all get our high school diplomas and GEDs and all that. So, so I just want to wish everybody a happy Juneteenth on Monday and a happy Father's Day next Sunday. You know, happy Father's Day to all the single moms who play both roles, and we want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tommy. I had a question for you, Tommy. You say you was at the graduation ceremonies?
I watched it on, uh, on YouTube.
Okay.
I didn't attend, but.
The word was it was a lot of violence and fighting and stuff going on there?
I wasn't aware about that. I stay home, watch it on TV. It's the best place for me to watch it. My young lady who graduated, she was quite, you know, popular. She was one of the top of her class, and, you know, she had a big demand for it. They only give them ten tickets, so, you know, this is.
Tom, I got you.
You know how that goes?
Anyone else for public comment? No one else for public comment? Commissioners Roundtable, we can start, um, in the, Miss, uh, Treasurer Benning's side and make our way down.
I have nothing.
Thank you. What about you, brother?
Uh, I want to say a prayer for the two, I mean, kids that lost their mother in Florida during the shooting, because they going through emotional problems. They seeing counselor and, uh, they blame their own self for their mother still. So, shout out.
Will we maybe do a ten-second silence prayer for them then? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Conley, you have anything for Commissioners Roundtable?
No. No.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Millsap.
I echo Tommy's Father's Day and Juneteenth. That's it.
Okay.
Okay, my turn. Um, my Commissioner Roundtable consists of, our youth was gonna set our, um, our three-on-three basketball tournament, cash tournament, Juneteenth celebration, and also Father's Day celebration at Water Tower Park, June seventeenth. We was gonna set it back to June twenty-fourth. But after further consideration, we're going full forward. It'll be June seventeenth, Water Tower Park, eleven AM, and all the way until four PM. We was gonna set it back a week or not, but we're gonna go, we're gonna move forward, and we're gonna continue the mission. Also, in my roundtable, I'm not gonna speak anything housekeeping or anything frivolous. Um, I'm just trying to understand that I pray a lot, um, as of late, and I have given myself over to God fully, and this is no pretend. I have been encountering physical battles, mental battles, and spiritual battles, um, that's been noticeable not only by myself but others. Um, I hear right now, and this guy telling me say this. I'd like to apologize to Treasurer Stacy Benny, and I'd like to apologize to Vice Chairman Rodney McCormick for anything and everything that I have done to them. That's the end of my Commissioners Roundtable. Next, uh, brother, uh,
May God bless all of us, our, all of our boards, our commissions, all of our leaders in authority in Michigan City. May your heavenly Father just open heaven and, and pour out your blessing upon all. Lord, that we come in love, mercy, peace, unity, as we do the best that we can. We ask for your strength, for your peace and prayer comfort in all of our government agencies, entities. And, uh, may you bless, uh, the family that has been going through this tragedy. And we thank you for hearing this prayer. In Jesus' name we pray, in the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen. Commissioner McCormick?
Oh, okay. I'd just like to, um, start off by saying to Mr. Perry, Mayor of this city, um, I just want to thank you on behalf of the Martin Luther King Center, my mother Ernestine Bernard, who's the president, um, and the rest of our board members for coming out to the center and making sure that we had, um, overgrown brush, tree lamps and stuff that had to be done, that you took care of that for us at our center. Um, we greatly appreciate it, and I bring the city good news. Um, some of it I will not go all in great detail, but we are, our now-for-profit, um, is, is in full effect. Our board is in full effect. We have two new attorneys, and we also are in the meet, in the process of getting ready to have another meeting this year to finalize some issues, and we are just short of getting some, soon as we get some maintenance work done, we will be back open. I just want the public to know that, because we have people on Facebook saying that we are, we don't have our status. That's not true. So please feel free to go to Secretary of State, and you'll see that the Martin Luther King Center is active. Uh, again, Mr. Perry, Harley, you and Sean Smith, Ted Water, the Street Department, thank you for everything you did for us out there. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Faith?
Yes, I found an old brochure that we had, commission on the social status of African-American males. And I would like to pass it around, and I would like to know if we can possibly, um, update and do a brochure to be put out like in the libraries and in the community to let people know that there is a social status commission and that,
That's cool.
You know, some of the stuff that we're doing, so I will pass.
You don't know nothing really about it, really, like in the D community, because they be like, what's that? What's that? So that'd be good to put out a brochure, Mr. Faith, good idea.
And this is old, twenty fifteen.
Oh, I have one more thing to say, if you might, guys, on mine real fast. Um, I'm sorry. And, uh, if you guys notice, I don't have my bulletproof vest on or no weapons.
I was not finished. Um, I just want to let everyone know the Citywide Back to School Rally is gonna be Saturday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven to three at Elson Guild Field. Gonna have games, fun, and food as usual. School supplies, free school supplies and social vaccinations, um, for Michigan City students and/or Michigan City area school families. Gonna be free vaccinations on that day. Uh, students' names will be checked. The parent and guardian will be asked to show ID. Parent and guardian must be present to receive school supplies. So don't forget Saturday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven to three at Guild Field, our Citywide Back to School Rally. I'll pass that around.
Uh, if we can get to Commissioner Millsap right quick, you wanna ask the mayor for some money?
No, no. Uh, thank you for attending our meeting, uh, Mayor Perry. Uh, my question was, on your radar in the future, is there a possibility of having a mayoral ball?
We're looking, Commissioner, we're looking very hard at that right now. We, we really want to have one, uh, the, we're probably gonna lower the price for it, because I want everybody to have a wonderful evening together. So we're, we're, we're looking very hard to do that, sir.
And I'm willing to assist in any way, just to make sure we get our money. Okay.
Thank you. We wouldn't, we wouldn't mind having a two thousand dollar, uh, two thousand dollar donation from ARP funds. You have it, so, I mean, it's just two thousand dollars ARP funds. Thank you.
On the low, uh, Commissioner Cox?
I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry, baby. I'm sorry, baby, I'm sorry.
You know, we talk about the violence in Michigan City. We talk about everything that's going on, but unless we put God in it, it's not gonna happen. So I'm passing around, there's gonna be our annual fellowship revival, June twenty-eighth to the thirtieth, seven PM nightly. And there's some local people pastors are gonna be speaking, so I'm passing that around for you guys too. Anybody want that in email, I can send it out to you in email. Um, next month, we are having Ms. Vina from, um, Friendship Gardens come to our meeting, and I do have, I'm passing this around. This was the twenty eighteen African Garden proposal that the Michigan City Commission of Social Status of African-American Males um, presented to International Friendship Garden and Friendship Gardens' proposal of what they were gonna do. If you want a copy of this, please put your name, your email, well, you put your name, I have your email address, and I'll make sure you get a copy of that before her meeting. She will be doing a presentation. I don't know what all it'll consist of, but just so that you can know, so you can have your questions ready to ask her, I can forward that information to you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Faith. I don't want to interrupt you, you done. Okay, Pastor, uh, Mr. Cox, Mr. Cox? You have nothing? Okay. We running on time. We carry, get it down. We be, uh, writing one-on-four, uh, Pastor, uh, Johnson. Nothing. Great. Pastor Hurt?
I would like to say that, that was, uh, that was tough, but it's needed. Uh, as a pastor of this area, I'd like to reach out to you. If you need me, come talk to me.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, you guys, motion to adjourn or?
Move to adjourn.
Uh, roll call, aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion, uh, thank you for coming, you guys.